I tried to work it away. But that just made me even sadder. I tried to keep myself busy. I ran around in circles, think I made myself dizzy. I slept it away. I sexed it away. I read it away. 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 Well, it's like crays in the sky. Sometimes I don't want to feel those level. Yeah, it's like crays in the sky. Sometimes I don't want to feel those level. I tried to run it away. I travel seventy states. Stop moving around make me feel better. I tried to let go my leather. Thought if I was alone, then maybe I could break a leather. To ride it away. I'll cry it away. Don't you cry, baby. Away. 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 Away.
So, good evening again to everyone. I'm just gonna do a quick introduction of myself. My name is Terrence Bangston. Presently, I am your coordinator for the Center for Student Leadership and Engagement, where I focus on first-year experience, our programs, and also service learning and community service opportunities effective September 5th. I will be the director for the Center for Student Leadership and Engagement. And so, I'm excited to co-host and moderate this first residential town hall on behalf of the REH community. And so, I'm going to turn it over to RD Alexis and RD Marcus, who will then introduce the rest of the REH staff that's on. And then, we'll ask them to pretty much cover some general citizenship guidelines, we would call them, and just common grounds of respect in terms of residing here at BC. Marcus and Alexis.
All right. Evening, everyone. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Alexis Cobb. I'm one of the resident directors here at Bloomfield College. This is my fourth year with the institution. In addition to being a resident director, I am also an advisor to several clubs and organizations. I know you guys have seen me, you know, on the quad, on campus, moving somewhere back and forth. So, it is great to see so many people on. Welcome back to the campus community. We're excited to have you back. We miss you guys so much. And I just want to just remind you guys the importance of staying safe during this time of uncertainty and always connecting with our campus community, so that way we may be of better assistance to you throughout your journey here at Bloomfield College.
Good evening. My name is Marcus Leek. I'm also one of the resident directors here at Bloomfield College. I actually graduated from the institution in 2016, and I've pretty much been here ever since. You guys may have seen me out on the quad, checking some people in. So, I'm happy that you guys have all, you know, have had the chance to come to Bloomfield College. And now that you're here, definitely utilize your time in this experience to make it a great one. So, we're gonna go over some policies tonight. And I hope that you guys, if you have any questions, definitely contact the REH staff member, and we'll be more than happy to help you.
Alexis, if you would just introduce the, any other REH staff, beginning with the remaining RDs who are on the line.
All right, guys. So, our staff has, you know, grown a little bit, and we have some new faces. So, the first person that I would like to just allow to introduce themselves is our new resident director of 225, Ms. Leila Wooten.
Hi, everybody. My name is Leila Wooten. I am the new RD of 225. I graduated with Marcus from Bloomfield College in 2016 and was away in Massachusetts for a couple of years, and now I'm back home in New Jersey. And I'm excited to work with everybody. If you live in 225, or if you live anywhere else and ever have any questions or need any help, don't feel, don't be afraid to talk to me. I'm excited to meet everybody and to get to know everybody. So, go Bears.
All right. Thank you, Leila. And then, of course, another professional staff member that we do have is RD Nicole. Her last name's a little difficult to pronounce, so I'm not gonna butcher it on Zoom. But, oh, please feel free to introduce yourself to our lovely campus community.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nicole Guillermo-Compres. So, yes, I am the new RD for Franklin Hall. I just graduated from Mount Hurst University. I did my underground television production, but since I did Resonance Live for a couple of years, I knew that this was going to be something that I wanted to continue. Some of you guys already met me at the quad, helping you guys check in. If you guys saw me in Franklin at the booth yesterday, hello. But I'm super excited to get to know all you guys the best way possible, even during these tough times. Let's make the best out of it. Definitely, this is a great opportunity that we're back on campus. And despite everything, guys, we got this. It's gonna be an amazing school year. And yeah, I'm super excited to be here.
All right, guys. And in addition to our professional staff member, we have several resident advisors. I'm just going to say their names. I know in like Zoom, you guys can do like little emojis, like clap your hands, whatever the case is. So, for my RA's, when you hear your name, please just put like an emoji up or drop something in the chat, just so that they can know who you are. I am going to go by building, starting with 23 Park. I'm not too sure if she is on the call. It is her birthday, so she may be excused for it this time. But we do have RA Jada Simone. She was an RA in 225 last year. Then, moving to 225, on the first floor, we have Destiny Walker. On the second floor, we have Carl Wiggins. On the third floor, we have Ashley Clark. And then, on the fourth floor, we have Naima Martin-Kane. So, all of these students are already involved on campus outside of REH, being a part of different clubs and organizations. And the cool thing about all of these RA's that we do have is that they are students as well. So, if you ever need someone to tutor you in a certain subject, please feel free to reach out. We have Naima, who is also an athlete on the track team. We have Ashley, who is super involved, a part of Team Infinite. We have Carl, who is a cat major. And then, we have Destiny, who is super bubbly, super involved, super exciting, and super fun. Then, moving on to Cle Hall, on the lower level, we have RA Bree. She is one of our captains of the women's soccer team. We have RA Darren, who is also on the men's basketball team. We have Ashley Strut, who is on the volleyball team. And then, we have RA Marvin, who literally does everything. I mean, I don't wanna, on Marvin's resume, because Marvin is just a part of everything. But he is also a part of student government, which is really, really great. And then, moving to Austin Place, we do have two amazing RA's, because as most of you guys know, a lot of our houses are off lock that were too. And so, we do have RA Joy, who is an upperclassman. And then, we also have, ooh, I'm blanking for a second. And Marcus, help me out. I'm forgetting one staff member. Oh, Denise, how could I forget Denise? She's back in 21 Austin. She is also a cat major, and she's always down to help, always down to tutor. Guys need any assistance, please reach out to her. And then, moving down to the Switzer staff, we have RA Xiao, who's been an RA with REH before. We have RA Alicia. And then, we have RA Nana, who are all super involved on campus. And then, last but not least, moving to our largest residential facility, Franklin Hall, we have RA Tati, who is joining us again. She was the RA for 25 Austin last year. We have RA Kiani, and then, we have RA Tyrone, who's also a part of student government. So, in addition to myself, three other professional staff members, and seventeen resident advisors, we are here to help you. So, we just want to, as a staff, welcome you all back to campus living.
Thank you for the RD Alexis. I'm gonna ask both Marcus and Alexis to select an RA for the next phase, which means in about another three minutes or so, to go over just some RA talking points in terms of leading by example, roles and responsibilities, in terms of creating a community and village of support. But right now, as we let in Mr. Washington, I'm gonna ask RD Wooten and to talk a little bit about good citizenship. In terms of your residence and area you oversee, and just the overall expectation for residence life, what are some talking points in terms of the character, values, ethics, respect, expectations, standards, and policies that you would like to touch on and you think are important to point out to students who are on this call?
Thank you, Terrence, for that nice question. I think more than anything, excuse me for a second, let me put my, I think I'm on Do Not Disturb. I think more than anything, we all need to make sure that we are abiding by the health standards for campus. I think that we need to make sure that we are all wearing our masks and social distancing as much as possible, you know, with everything that we're experiencing right now. I know that our health and safety, to me, and as well as all the rest of the RDs, is more important than anything. You all, students, are here to go to school first, and in order to let you have a place to stay and be able to continue your education here, we want to make sure that everybody is safe. So, please, make sure you're wearing a mask while you're walking around in the building on the quad. If I see you, I'm gonna check you, so be prepared for that, too. But also, just making sure that we're all getting along and respecting each other, respecting our roommates, respecting, if you live in a house, your housemates, your suite mates. I'm a firm believer in respect, and I think that as long as everybody is on the same page, that we can have a great, successful year, so.
Nicole, anything you would like to add?
Well, RD Wooten definitely touched on really good points. But definitely, we do have, you know, our new students, our new first-year students, transfers on campus, for those who are returners, you know, for those in the other, you know, upperclassmen, definitely good to set the example. RA-wise, staff member-wise, if you're in clubs, organization, they do look up to you guys, that's one of the word advice. So, definitely set the example, like RD Wooten said, respect for each other, keeping each other safe. And yeah, basically, being a good citizen to the community, respect. So, my thing was mainly to set the example and being able to be a good leader, so that then they'll be, will be a good leader and pass it down to, as a domino effect, to the next upcoming group coming in the next few years.
We appreciate you. And then, RD Marcus, we know that you are the, one of the OGs, we should say, but you're also an alumni, so you've been here before. Anything that you want to add to that area in terms of coming from a resident director perspective?
Yeah, definitely, just make sure that you're getting involved and that you're utilizing, you know, student leaders that's on campus and that you see out on the quad. Definitely ask them what their experience is and what their experience has been like, and figure out what are some of the ways that you can get involved on campus to become these student leaders that you see. Some of them are RA storytellers. I was a RA as well as a storyteller, so there was many different things that I did on campus to stay active, to stay positive. And at some point in time, I was asked to be a RD because of the positive things that I did on campus. So, if you're looking to get active, just reach out to someone and ask them how. We have RA's at the duty booth of each building, so if you, you know, have any questions about policies or procedures or anything like that, or just about any of, you know, their personal lives, how they manage school in their personal lives, definitely go to a duty booth and ask them. They're at the duty booth starting at eight o'clock each day.
Anything else, Alexis?
Um, I think that the team really summed it up. I think it's really important that, you know, you guys take advantage of your campus experience and be more than just a student. We are here to create student leaders. And so, like the slogan says, you know, write your own story. You have to be able to add some content into that book that you are creating. And so, now is the time, with us having all these different events, and with us encouraging you guys to be outside, to get out of your rooms, but of course, the social distance, it's really important for you guys to take this opportunity to expand your horizons here. And so, like I said, you can lean on us. REH and CSLE will be working very closely throughout this academic year as one team. And so, you know, we really want to bridge that gap and make sure that you guys have the best experience possible, because although COVID, you know, may diminish some of your celebration, it does not diminish your accomplishment for being a student leader and, you know, excelling academically.
And who, Alexis and Marcus, would you like to talk about, discuss from the RA level? Perhaps we can have one young lady and one young man represent the RA staff and talk a little bit about the roles and expectations of resident advisors, and has the role changed due to COVID this particular year?
Um, so, the first person that we would like to speak is our own. And we think that Tyrone can also just give a perspective. He is a returning staff member, and he is a part of student government. So, Tyrone, feel free to take over.
Is Tyrone still present? Let's see.
I do see him here.
Okay, maybe we can start with the next RA and then come back to Tyrone?
Yes, just give me one second. I hear some people are having issues with connection. I believe they just messaged.
Okay. And many of them may be on the same Wi-Fi, huh?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, a few of them, the RA's are messaging, saying that they're having some connection issues.
Okay, well, if you want to talk a little bit about the role of a RA, that would be fun as well.
Okay, so.
I see Tyrone in here now. I don't wanna interrupt.
There. Tyrone?
Hello?
There he is. Okay.
I'm sorry, the volume's really low for some reason. I can hardly hear.
We can hear you well. Did you, do you understand what we'd like you to present on? Did you need us to repeat it?
Can you repeat it?
Sure. Alexis?
Okay, so, Tyrone, what I would like for you to do is just share what an RA is and how your role may have changed just a little bit because of COVID, and just some of the goals that you're hoping at the RA's will accomplish this year for our residential students.
Hey, yeah, no problem. Um, so, in my personal opinion, being a RA means being a student leader, being someone who can actively lead students on campus to do better, to improve themselves as people overall, to be influential. Being a RA also means that you have to assure students that they must follow the rules that are in place, and to reiterate the purpose of them, it's to also, just to be that extra set of eyes to assist the resident directors with their, like overseeing the various housing areas that are on campus and whatnot. And since COVID has hit, the way the RA job has changed is that we have to be like a little bit more strict in terms of what the rules and regulations are and the policies, because the virus is so serious and things are like, so if things are changing like every single minute, literally, and you never know what could happen. So, we have to be sure that we're on top of things. We have to be sure that students are following guideline rules and whatnot, to be able to protect themselves and to make sure that everyone is in good health. And I believe to myself, what I hope to get out of this is to improve myself as a student leader, to be able to proactively lead students to do better, and to just overall assure everyone that everything's gonna be okay and that regardless of what's happening, we're gonna still be able to enjoy ourselves, like, look at the events that we have next week. Like, I understand that we're in a dire time, but at the same time, it's like, we have to at least do something to assure that we're in high spirits and whatnot.
And any other RA want to comment on, what are we doing to create a community of support for residents who may be experiencing difficulties during this time, having to come from home and deal with COVID restrictions, but then also still having to do, deal with restrictions even here on campus, provided they are necessary to keeping us all safe? What type of community support do we have available? Anyone would like to take that?
Um, I guess I'll speak on behalf of REH as a resident. We are still offering programming, but we have discussed having a lot of virtual programming, because what REH wants to do is we don't want to just reach out to our residential students, we want to reach out to the entire campus community. And then, for our students who unfortunately had to change their residential status because of financial reasons, we still want to make them feel a part of our family and a part of that REH family. So, we are providing support through continuing to push programming, whether that means limiting the amount of students that we have to have at programming, at programs, but still making sure that they happen. We're still going to have, you know, our floor meetings. We're taking this approach to have a virtual town hall meeting for the freshmen. They will still have first-year coaching meetings with the first-year resident directors. There's just so many things that we are going to do to ensure that, you know, we really contribute to the campus community, but we're also going to continue to ensure that we have that relationship with the Wellness Center, with Nurse Clarissa, P O P, just to ensure that everyone has that support, because I think that, you know, this time is not only just, you know, an emotional toll on everyone, but it is a mental toll on everyone as well, regardless of whether or not you've been, you know, impacted personally or not. I think just the changes in itself are something to adjust to. And I don't think that anyone has pictured their college experience being like this, but we have to make the best out of what we have.
Thank you, Alexis. And then, I'm just gonna talk a little bit on behalf of CSLE and go over the calendar of events and the process for registering events, and also the process for being able to enter and participate in events this particular semester, definitely during Welcome Back Week. And we've released the calendar for Labor Day weekend and Labor Day, actual Labor Day, which is Monday, September 7th. So, I'll speak a little bit on that as well. Before I proceed to that, I want to introduce, because I see her on the line, allow her to say hello, I see our administrative assistant for the Center for Student Leadership and Engagement, Oz Jackson.
What's up, folks? Terrence, is my volume good?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Um, hey, guys. I'm Oz, as Terrence mentioned. I'm the administrative assistant of CSLE. I'm really looking forward to meeting all you guys. You don't know me. This semester, as the RD's pointed out, it's gonna be a challenging semester with COVID. It's really important that we stick to CDC protocols, make sure, you know, that we're wearing our masks, make sure that we're social distancing, making sure that we're washing our hands. But despite all that, I think that we can overcome, if we're all staying on the same page, we can overcome this, and you know, it's not gonna stop programming. As Alexis mentioned, REH and CSLE are gonna be working together to make sure that you guys get the best, best college experience that you can. Um, and remember that it's also, you know, if you're ever interested about like how to get involved on campus, you can always stop by CSLE. Terrence and I are more than happy to answer your questions. If you ever have feedback on what you want to see more on campus, you can stop by CSLE. Terrence and I are more than happy. We're very interested in hearing what you guys have to say on your feedback, on things that you want to see, right? Because we're here to deliver the best experience for you guys. Um, and yeah, that's it. So, you know, my door's always open. Please feel free to stop by CSLE to say hello. And if I don't, if I don't know you yet, I'm looking forward to meeting you. Okay?
Thank you, Oz. I'm gonna ask the president of the student government and also the president of the Greek Council to come on live. They're also serving as orientation leaders. We've expanded the role of orientation leaders to help us welcome not just our first-year students, but also our returning students, as we know that as changes have occurred and the college is constantly pivoting to accommodate not just the governor's executive orders, but any policies that our COVID task force at Bloomfield College may put forth. We've expanded their role, and we consider them as well to be staff of CSLE until further notice. And so, I'm gonna ask Samaja and Kyle to come on and just talk a little bit about what to expect from Greek Council, student government, and just also your orientation leaders being a support in addition to the residence life staff during all of the upcoming events. Samaja first?
Hi, everyone. My name is Samaja. I am the current Greek Council president, and I'm a proud member of Zeta Phi Beta Swordy Incorporated. I am currently a graduating senior here at Bloomfield College, and I've been here my, all my four years of college. What to be expecting from the Greek Council? Of course, we're gonna try to have as many events as possible on campus that promote social distancing as well as everyone's safety. But being as though there are some people who choose not to go to those type of events due to the COVID pandemic, we will be offering the events virtually also, including some only virtual programming. So, we have seventeen orgs on campus. If you're ever interested in any org, you can always contact myself or a person from that organization. CSLE's doors are always open. If you have a question, you rather ask staff other than myself. I'm also serving as a second-year orientation leader, so I'm pretty, I guess, like, relevant with the freshmen and also the other students. So, you can ask me any question, email if you ever need my phone number, that's good as well. But yeah, that's it. Nice to meet you all.
So, speaking of setting a good example, our president already knows I'm gonna get on him about his wave cap that he should not have on during this formal presentation, but he does anyway, because he's gonna say he's in his room and it's COVID, which I'm sure many of you probably have that same perspective. But always remember, there is a time and place for everything, isn't that right, President Kyle?
Yes, T. As there is on, I'm in the place.
Okay, anything you want to share with the student body and just your experience as a resident advisor? And you also were the tutor counselor for EOF this year, correct?
Yes. Um, first, first, oh, excuse me. Everybody can hear me? Don't my Wi-Fi was acting? First, I'd like to say, dang, why's my Wi-Fi acting up? I apologize. So, yeah, first, I'd like to say it's an honor to be here, you know, see everybody's faces back on campus. For student government, oh, Miss Keyshawn, for student government this year, we will definitely be taking caution to what's going on around campus, especially with the events and stuff that's going on next week. Our job is to have fun, but make it safer for the students around. Yes, if, with that being said, anything the RA's would need from us, or you know, any other faculty around the school, then ask, then we could go from there. But other than that, nine times out of ten, you will see me coming across the quad, or you can email me if you have any questions or concerns or anything you would like to see happen from the student government this year. Now, that's pretty much.
Okay, and so, now, I'm just gonna go over just a few things on the counter really quickly. I'll post in, or if we can get one of the orientation leaders to do it as well, to post the link to register for events. Also, in your email, if you haven't gotten it, you'll get it today, is a survey question. We are surveying resident students to see how many of you intend to be on. We we are surveying resident students to see how many of you intend to be on campus for the holiday weekend, which is the following weekend, not this weekend, next weekend. So the, I think, the fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh. Here is the thing, the president and um really just all of the officers and your REs, your RDs really want you to stay on campus. And so we are coming together to put together a festive uh uh weekend and we'll talk a little bit about that. Um and really why that is, is not just because we love you and we want you to stay here and we're happy that you're back. It is the safest thing you can do for yourself and also for your roommate. Um to go home and act to your respective communities after coming um as as far as we have uh in this pandemic. And end up at random cookouts, end up in random situations that may be unsafe. And then bring that energy and or um um ideally the virus back to campus can just cause um a pandemic. And or something we simply cannot um uh contain or or maintain. And so we are trying to do things as we were just discussing all on a stat on a chat today with the uh RDs and CSLE. And leadership from the student affairs staff, other ways that we can do and other measures we can take to keep each other safe and definitely our students. Um as we do not want to shut down resident housing, as we do not want to have to shut down programming. And absolutely uh take away um any form of college experience. We do not want COVID to defeat us in that regard. And in order to do that, we have to do our part. And so part of doing our part is wearing our mask. If we just begin with that. Um we can cut down the spread of this virus or the idea that it could take over Bloomfield College campus. The way it has already impacted other colleges um is simply by wearing our mask. When we're that frustrated and we don't want to wear it, going back into our air conditioned rooms and enjoying ourselves by ourselves. It's probably the best thing uh to do if you have a vehicle on campus, going to your vehicle and taking a ride or having a seat in there. Anything besides compromising other people. So you're not just wearing the mask for yourself, you're wearing it for others. Um there will be a zero tolerance both from the REH staff and they'll talk a little bit more about that. But definitely from the Center for Student Leadership staff as it relates to uh violating uh not wearing masks. Or giving security or the Bloomfield Police Department or the resident life staff or our orientation leaders, any type of grief. Or or attitude um and or refusal in terms of wearing masks, particularly when you've made a choice to not just sign a disclaimer. Explain it to you exactly why this is necessary and what the potential outcomes are uh so that finding agreement. But also just for the lack of community that you've shown as it relates to um the policies and procedures for being. Or the expectations in terms of being a resident stu- student and having a common ground of respect. And a part of that respect is protecting each other. So again, all masks will be required at all events. There will be certain activities beginning this week that would also um require gloves uh to be worn. As it relates to um perhaps um say carnival type games, uh basketball type competitions where we're shooting in a hoop. But throwing big bats at cans, different things like that because we just want to take an extra measure. I'll quickly just go through the calendar again, um and then I want to move on to student affairs and any questions. So beginning tomorrow, uh we've decided uh just as an extra precaution. Um uh and because we have such a robust calendar that we are not going to host our inspirational Sunday uh prayer circle on the quad. It will be virtual. That link will go out tonight uh to the student community as well as the full B B C community. And it will be shared specifically with you by the REH staff as well. And so when all else fails, please go to your email um to access uh the prayer circle beginning at two o'clock. It will represent different um dimensions in terms of religion. Um it is not about one, it is about all, it's about us uh and being B C strong and just starting the school uh week off with great spirits. Um I believe it will also feature hopefully a performance from our Bloomfield Gospel Choir. Um provided that we can pull that off technology wise, so please bear with us. Um so join us at two o'clock. The link again, look out for that. Tomorrow night, uh hosted by the Bloomfield College Student Government and also the Bloomfield College Greek Council will be the first of many movie nights on the quad. Um and tomorrow's feature um uh video will be Stomp the Yard. Um and so we want you to do exactly that, stomp the yard, but in a safe way. We want you to definitely wear your mask. Uh we'll have not just in addition to your regular menu in terms of what will be available in the caf. Um and I want to touch on the caf uh in a moment as well. But also we will have um additional items available to you at no charge on the quad. So you will not need to go back inside the caf or check in the caf. And these things will typically not just be tomorrow, but throughout the week and they will be associated. So tomorrow we'll have nachos and popcorn and other things, meaning uh the trimmings or the other additional food items that we provide to you. Both beverages, have slushes, Italian ice and frozen slushes on different days will typically go with whatever the theme is. So please come out. I'm explaining all that to say we're spending a lot of money. And so most of this is your money. Please come out and enjoy these events, but do it in a safe way. And so tomorrow's movie night begins at eight AM. Uh I mean, sorry, eight PM. Um and again, you should have a link or you should have seen this flyer. You see the barcode here. This barcode allows you to register for all the events at once, all the way through September 7th. And then we have our fall calendar uh that will release uh prior to then as well. The same process will go for all events. Uh B C uh Spirit Pride Day will be uh Monday, August thirty thirty first. We're asking everyone to wear um a B C apparel shirt. If you don't have one, you can stop by CSLE. First year students, we still have T-shirts for you. And then we also have new T-shirts that uh should arrive on campus, hopefully uh by Monday as well. If not, we do have other Powerfamiliar items uh that will be available to you. You can also stop by the tent that will feature the athletic team and they will have items that can be ordered. Um and or for sale, come out and say hello to our athletic uh sports teams and student groups on that day. And the quad will feature a beginning at twelve noon. Um and I believe the first yoga session starts at one o'clock. We'll have three different yoga sessions on the quad. There will be a wellness fair and the uh wellness team is actually uh hosting those particular activities. So look out for the deep more details on that posted on the quad in front of the different tents. Uh you'll see which different activities are there. Uh we had an unveiling uh unveiling scheduled um for tomorrow, which featured. Uh a community marching band, but we thought to take an extra precaution. We wanted all band members to be tested, which they were. Um unfortunately, the results uh will not be back by tomorrow. And so we are postponing the unveiling and ceremonial uh program to launch our Black Lives Matter campaign. Some of you would have saw or noticed that on the uh steps of Talbot Hall, those that are return returning students, you definitely noticed a big change. Uh we've branded it under the uh request of our Bloomfield College Student Government. And the blessings of student affairs and our college president, Marquita. Uh to rebrand the front of the college center and launch our first uh student driven campaign, uh Black Lives Matter. And it is about not just saying that only black lives matter, but making that proclamation to say that Bloomfield stands in solidarity. Uh to the uh announced racist and racism. Um and we do that also as a college campus community. On Tuesday, there will be a block party on Oakland Street, which is closest to the gym. Please join us. We have some, again, great uh services and food items that will be specially, that have been specially chosen for you during that time. Um from gourmet dining and we also have other vendors uh that will be sponsored. Some of the first year students got to experience a very delicious food truck uh courtesy of RD Alexis and REH team. That will be returning for some time on that day. We have a few other surprises um and vendors available. So please stop by the block party from twelve PM to six PM and uh have a good time. Wednesdays, rep your flag. This will be a cultural explosion. You'll look out your windows and you'll see tons of flags representing every country that Bloomfield College students come from. Pretty much dating back to the beginning of time. And so more and more flags have been added. And so for the first time ever, uh CSLE has partnered with gourmet dining to come up with three specialized dishes. I mean, I'm sorry, eleven specialized dishes from eleven different cultures. And so again, this will be the first time we've ever held a a program, a culture program of this magnitude. Uh but definitely featuring as many dishes. And so we expect for you to come out and let us know if we got it right or if we got it wrong. Um so come out and rep your flag and rep your your culture by tasting different dishes and giving us your feedback. Um we want to thank our OLS who's going to help us out on that day because again, to man that many stations for you safely. Uh we needed to bring in additional staff. So again, we want you definitely to show up and show out for that. Um Thursday, September third, the student government and Greek council will host their annual student organization fair. So if you have questions about how to join an organization, if you were a freshman last year and you kind of didn't get an opportunity to really join organizations. Or uh perhaps looking to start in your own or reactivating organizations, we have and look forward to um a few coming back uh this particular year. And so you can get more information for organization and also see some featured performances by our Greek groups. And other presentations by other groups, including the Bloomfield College Dance Team on that day from four PM to six thirty right on the quad. The main or premiere event of the week is the silent party, which will occur outside from eight PM to midnight. This will also be a standard of whether or not we can have any more parties this semester. If we get this right, guys, I enjoy, I assure you, um aside from us staying safe and not violating uh COVID rules and social distancing. We will be able to have a pretty uh decent and festive semester uh regardless of the restrictions we are under. So we need your partnership and your support, not just your fun. Um and you coming out to uh drink ices and have some food that night as well. Um but we'll have three different DJs that night, eight PM with three different channels on the headphones. We think it's going to be a great event, uh September third, eight PM to midnight. And then we will end the week of events with a tailgate, also sponsored by student government and the Greek council. In the B C parking lot, the main parking lot on Liberty from four PM to nine PM. We have just added a mechanical bull, which you'll be able to ride safely. And also uh it'll be sanitized after each occasion. So that's a new attraction we're also adding. In addition to a few other things that will occur on that day. Um I'll quickly go through just the last part of the week, which is the. Labor Day calendar. So on Friday, we talked about the tailgate, but then we will end with the lip sync battle on the quad. We are looking for ten different groups, whether you're organizations or individuals. First year students can participate. You can sign up with any orientation leader or let your um resident advisor know that you are interested. And they will get you in contact with CSLE. You pretty much will sign up, put together a performance for us. Um if you're not familiar, uh YouTube lip 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 sync battle, and it'll give you an idea of how that works. And this is safer than karaoke because then we won't have to sanitize the mics afterwards. Um but this um looks to be a good time. I hope you guys will sign up and to participate. Again, we're looking for ten different acts to engage in the lip lip sync battle and we have some great prizes for that day. So that's how we'll conclude the night after the tailgate on Friday, September fourth. Going into Saturday, again, the holiday weekend will be a game day. We'll have tons of three D games, everything from Jenga. Um to human chess to um or large sized chess to human sized large sized chess. Uh also connect four games, uh multiple large games. And these are some of the features, uh some of the attractions that will require gloves as well. And also uh sanitizing before and after you uh engage in those particular games. Uh those will be available on the quad in addition to several tabletop um carnival uh style games. Uh we will also have some themed food for you outside. I think that day we're kind of doing like a Blimpies on the quad type of field. Uh where you'll be able to get any type of custom cold cut sandwich on that day. In addition to some cold cuts and some food truck options, uh readers for a selective period of time throughout the day. Each night of the weekend, including the holiday, Monday will end with a movie night. That night will be Friday or Friday after next. Uh we'll take a poll to determine which one you prefer. Sunday will be the B C barbecue, which is the pre-holiday barbecue. So this will be like, just like being home, all the trimmings. Um that you can expect from a normal barbecue will be available to you that day on the quad. Uh movie night for that night will be Bad Boys for Life. Uh again, all movie nights begin at eight PM and will feature a live DJ as well and also themed movie snacks, including Skittles, Reese Cup Snickers and things of that nature. Uh B C seafood uh seafood board, which will be the first one ever. They kind of gave you a little snippet of what that would be like. This one will be more like a crab fest. So you'll have uh opportunities to get a little more than you may have been offered for uh I think lunch uh the other day. But also you'll have more of a feast where it'll be stretched out like again, a crab fest. And so that will be from twelve to five in the um, it says the B C parking lot. Um I believe that it's actually going to be on the quad. Either way, we'll confirm that. And that's from twelve to five. And then that night will be our final movie night of that particular weekend. And we will be showing moonlight. Please register for all these events. Remember to have your mask. If you do not, uh if you forget your mask, simply ask security or the OL or or uh resident advisor who will be at the entry gate. Which will be between Talbot Hall and Cleal Hall. For a mask, we will have welcome back kits on site for those of you who need it. Um and now is Dean Mitchell on board and would like to come on and introduce the student affairs team?
Can you see me?
Yes ma'am.
You do see me. Okay, wonderful. And you can hear me, correct? You can hear me well? Okay, so I'm Rose Mitchell and I am the Assistant Vice President for Student Affairs. I don't know if Dr. Patrick Lammy is on this Zoom tonight, but he's our Vice President for Student Affairs. Terrence, I'm not quite sure if Dr. Lammy has joined us, but I'm representing the Division of Student Affairs, the Central Office of Student Affairs. I'm not quite sure if Keisha Newell is on this call. Keisha's on? Okay, Keisha.
Hi everyone.
Hi Keisha. Um I I I don't, I I don't see anyone's faces other than the person that might be speaking. Oh, I see you, Keisha. Uh so um Keisha's our administrative assistant and she's fantastic with working with the students. Dr. Lammy, Keisha and myself, we go above and beyond, not because we are required to do so. It's because we want to do so. There's a big difference in being passionate about something and having purpose. And in our central office, that's what we lead by. We lead by purpose and we lead by passion. And we do so much to help our students in so many situations that you have. Whether you are having a financial issue, whether you're having some kind of educational academic issue. Whether you're having a financial issue, a medical issue, uh emotional issue, uh relationship issue. Uh book funding issue, whatever your issues are collectively, our office is like the hub of support. So I give Dr. Lammy and I give Keisha a lot of kudos for being such a team to work with. I also want to give a lot of love and shout out to uh the Office of Residential Education and Housing. The resident directors, the RAs are amazing. They really are an amazing team. The Center for Student Leadership and Engagement, another amazing team. The one thing that I expect of all of you, because I know I have new students on this Zoom. I have returning students on this Zoom. So I'm speaking to the new students right now in particular. This is your opportu- opportunity to determine who you want to be. Not who other people want you to be, not trying to fit into someone else's shoes, not trying to shine into someone else's star. Not trying to love someone as someone else's heart. This is your time to wear your own shoe, to love your own heart and to shine in your own star first. Don't let anyone um try to create something in you that you know is wrong. So as an example, the message that I want to get across before I talk about conduct and and disciplinary stuff, because that's another role I play. I was raised to believe that it takes a village to offer support and to help people to grow and prosper. I was also raised to believe that. I'm my brother's keeper and I'm my sister's keeper. So I'm asking all of you to do something perhaps that you've never done before. Be someone's sister's keeper and brother's keeper because COVID demands that we are. This is no time to be silent about what goes on in life, on and off the college campus. All of you should take an ethical stand. Your character should be off the charts about keeping yourselves safe and keeping other people safe. If something sounds wrong, if something looks wrong, if something feels wrong. Trust and believe most likely it's wrong. And so when you see something, say something. If you hear something, say something. If you feel something, say something because wrong is wrong all day long. Because wrong is wrong all day long. So when it comes to safety, I can't think of anyone's safety that's more important than your safety, because no one's safety is more important than my own. I can't keep other people safe if I don't keep myself safe. So I know that you're getting a lot of information. I know you probably had these kind of talks with a mother, a father, a grandmother, an auntie, an uncle, a neighbor, a teacher. I know someone has been talking to you, hopefully the same way that we're all talking to you. But listen, there's a big difference in hearing and listening. You need to learn to listen to good advice. So when we say to you, "wear your mask", when we say to you, "social distance", we mean that from a life standpoint. You have no idea how hard our team has been working to prepare for this reopening. So many times we've heard people say, "don't do it, don't restart, don't come back", but we all work morning, noon, and night to make sure that you could come back to the college campus, returning students, that you could come to our college campus, new students. So we welcome our new students, because this is your first experience. We welcome our returning students to come back. And guess what, returning students? I'm expecting all of you to lead by a greater example this year for the new students. Don't show them what's wrong. Don't show them that you're leading by the wrong example. I am expecting sophomores, juniors, and seniors to rise above the way that you've never, never rose above before. Now is your challenge. We all know that we lost our Black hero just the other day. Chadwick Boseman. We lost a Black Panther. We lost a real-life, Black action hero who was helping cancer patients when we didn't even know he had cancer. We didn't even know that he was dying. So Wakanda for Life, Bloomfield College. You must be the Black Panther this year, this fall, this year during COVID. Keep yourselves safe. We don't want to ever see you without a mask on. We don't ever want to get an incident report where it was multiple people in a room smoking and drinking. No mask, no social distance, because guess what? No mask, no social distancing, partying with alcohol, all of those things means you will go home. And as much as I want to be this cheerleader, and I know I am, because that's the noise I bring. Like, let's do this all day long. Let's power up and get this done. Let's be this great community. As much as I am that person, I'm also the one that brings the noise of disciplinary action. And trust me, I'm leaning in, so you can really see me and hear me. You don't want me to bring this hammer. I want to bring you nothing but love. I want to cheer you on and see you do well. I want you guys to email me, ask to Zoom with me because you're feeling down and blue. You don't know how you're going to go on. You don't know if you could really do this online learning thing. Something just doesn't feel right. You don't want to get up out of bed. You don't want to deal with your professor. You're tired of staying in your space. It's pressure and too much. That's when you need to call on the team that's talking to you tonight. Let me bring you love and not the hammer that I know I have in my back pocket, because the hammer means I will have to invite you and then mandate, because there's a difference. I'm going to invite you to go home. Then I'm going to have the mandate that you go home. So have fun. You can have fun, but just differently, that's all. Nobody asks for COVID. Nobody asks for a pandemic. Nobody asks for a bellyache or a headache either. And trust me, nobody asks to be placed in a body bag. So I'm going to do everything, everything, to make sure that you stay safe, but we can't do it. I can't do it. My team can't do it. We can't do it alone. You have to be your brother's keeper and your sister's keeper, because I don't like, I really don't like reading incident reports at any point of the day, especially late at night, 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. Nor do I like coming onto the college campus at 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. I certainly don't like having a Zoom meeting, because it's a disciplinary meeting. I certainly don't want to place you even on conduct probation, but that's the least of a sanction. I don't want to suspend you from housing. I don't want to suspend you from the college. And I definitely cry when I have to expel a student from the college, because I don't want that to be you, and it doesn't have to be. You just have to operate and pivot a little bit differently this year, at least this fall, until the governor, the CDC tells us otherwise. This is a small time in your life. I do not believe we're going to deal with COVID for the rest of our lives. So look at it the way that you could get through it by thinking, okay, this is a moment of time in my life. I have to pivot and shift to stay alive while also creating friendships and, you know, getting engaged and being connected. I'm an alumni of Bloomfield College. I have my degree from Bloomfield College. So does Marcus, so does Terrence, so does Keisha. It's a beautiful place, but we're in a different place, a different space. So some of the things that I, and I know I'm giving you a lot of information, but it's all good, it's all out of love. I need you guys, especially first-year students, to know that we are a minute away from the police. We are a minute away from the fire department. We are a minute away from the EMTs. We are just a minute away. We have 24/7 campus security officers, the resident directors, the resident R.A.s. We have surveillance cameras all over the place for your protection. My motto every year is, "Don't start, none won't be none." Don't invite outsiders to the college to come here from other schools. Don't invite your friend from around the way to come on campus and come into the residence halls. Don't invite commuter students, because right now they're considered an outside guest to residence. So they can come onto the college campus for events, but they can't come into the residence halls. That's your space. That's keeping you safe. So when we see these things on surveillance cameras, or if Big Brother, Big Sister, who are your keepers, inform us that something is wrong, then there comes the incident report. And as all of the team said earlier, we don't want to shut this down, because if we shut this down, you guys pack up and then you go home. And then what happens after that? So right now you can see each other in a safe way. That's better than nothing. So you all, two more points before I turn it back over to Terrence. There, you should have received an email. These are really two critical points. You should have received an email titled, in the subject line, "Bloomfield College Students, Safe College Students Online Training." You have to take five COVID courses. They are required. And I will be checking, along with Keisha Newell, which students took the test and which students did not. And if you didn't take it, that's your first, that's your first issue with my office. So five COVID courses, one sexual violence course, and one alcohol and drug awareness course. So the COVID courses, September the 11th, there are four, no, I'm sorry, five. There are five COVID courses that you have to take on September the 11th, or by September the 11th. The first one is two minutes long, the second one is nine minutes long, the third one is five minutes long, the fourth one is six minutes, the fifth one is seven minutes. Doesn't take long to take those COVID courses, and they are required. Then September 25th, you have to take a sexual violence test, of course. It's only 41 minutes. Then on October the 9th, it's alcohol and drugs that you have to take. That's 33 minutes. These courses are required. Again, they are required for your benefit. Also, you should all be checking into, you should download the Live Safe app. It's livesafemobile.com. It's an app where you should go on every day. It's like a daily health check. And it's going to ask you, "do you have any COVID symptoms? Have you been around anyone with COVID?" And if that happens, be honest on it. Be very honest answering those questions, because it's a lifesaver. It really is a lifesaver. So I know that I've given you guys a lot of information. Again, Terrence had mentioned something about the welcome kits that have a lot of the PPE stuff in it, such as your face mask, hand sanitizers, a touchless device, a digital thermometer, all of that good stuff. We're just trying to keep you safe. I lose sleep at night thinking, oh my God, who is going to get COVID? And I don't want anyone to ever test positive for COVID, ever. Some of you might have had that experience, either directly or a family member. Some of you might have lost someone. We are here for you. We are so here for you. I am so open to talk to any of you confidentially. All you got to do is email me, Zoom with me. Students do it all the time. I Zoom with students even on weekends. So I'm going to end there, but by saying that I love you a lot. I love you a lot. I love you, and I haven't even met some of the first-year students yet. And my returning students, you know how much I love you. So I'm going to turn it back over to Terrence, because I know that we have questions. I think this ends around 9:30, so I don't want to take too much more time.
Yeah, so as we transition, I'll just ask, if you have any questions, you can sort of just raise your hand or put them in the chat, and then I'll ask the RDs to kind of help me pull those questions out. I also would like some of the CSLE staff to come on camera, just say hello. Nasir, Kay, Jason Darby, who's in a new role. He's a first-year student, but he trained with our R.A., or orientation leaders and R.A.s and storytellers this summer. But he will operate as our first-year liaison, which is a new work-study position. So that will help him and our office stay connected to first-year students. So first-year students, look out for Jason. I'm sure he will make himself known to you. He's a great, positive new leader on campus, and he can help you again stay connected to our office. And then we have Kay, who's one of our veteran OGs of the office returning. She graduates unfortunately in December. So we're going to be looking to hire not just four additional individuals in our office as we have some new roles relevant to training students around some important health and wellness topics, operating also as building managers. But again, we'll have vacancies that will open up. And so look out for information from myself or Aj in that regard. Nasir is also on here. He's a returning employee in our office as well. And are there any questions? Anyone see any in the chat? I would like T. Roy to say hello too, because he's helping out in REH. As some of you may know, our former director or now former director Sandy has transitioned from the college this summer. And so Dean Mitchell and Student Affairs will be launching a search. And in the interim, we have great folks like T. Roy, who has stepped in to help out. And so will CSLE. T. Roy, any comments from you?
Good evening, guys. I think everybody pretty much summed it up. I want everybody to stay safe, stay involved, get involved if you're not already involved, and just take advantage of all that Bloomfield College has to offer. I was a housing coordinator a few years back, and I didn't graduate from Bloomfield College, but I feel like I'm a part of the family. Hence the reason that I'm back helping, hence the reason that I'm always there to lend a helping hand. I took advantage of the experience. I took advantage of getting connected. I took advantage of meeting new people and building those relationships. And I am proof that, you know, once you do that, amazing things happen. So I'd like to welcome you all. I want you all to have an amazing year. Again, stay safe and get involved.
So a few questions we have. Some of the freshmen to our RDs and R.A.s and also Dean Mitchell, not receiving emails, which has a lot to do probably with many of you are used to receiving emails from the admissions counselors, which goes by the email addresses that you put on your application. However, the school will have start communicating to you via your Bloomfield College email addresses. And so as we transition to new jobs, this is like the same thing, transition to a new professional space and platform. And so we're going to ask that you begin to check your student emails beginning tonight. And if you're experiencing any difficulty with your bloomfield.edu email address, which typically, depending on your name, should be your first name underscore and last name, it will not always be the case, depending on if you have a similar first and last name or the same first and last name as some other student who may have an active account. And either way, you can email the helpdesk@bloomfield.edu, helpdesk@bloomfield.edu. Aj, if you can put that orientation leader in the chat. If you experienced that you, a difficulty with your email address for bloomfield.edu or realize that you do not have one, please send them an email and they will take care of it. So once again, start checking your bloomfield.edu tonight after this call. Tell other resident students to do that. There may be one or two more times that you might get an email from us that will be including your personal email address. Other than that, we're going to rely on bloomfield.edu. Would that be fair to say, Dean Mitchell?
Yes, absolutely. And Terrence, I know I'm putting her on the spot, so I apologize upfront. But Keisha is a breadth of knowledge and information. So Keisha, is there anything that you want to share with our resident students?
Hi, everyone. I'm sure you see my name in the chat. I've been trying to answer everybody's, the questions that people are putting up. But just to go over some of the services that the Student Affairs Office has. If you are in need of emergency loan, you could come to our office. On the door, we put out QR codes, because right now everybody's working weird shifts. So there's a QR code, or you could just email me and I could send you the form for our emergency loan. If you, if you are, if you know someone who is having food issues, we also run a pantry out of our office. And we also have a career closet, because I know some of you may have come here without bringing, you know, more formal attire or work-type attire from home. So there is a career closet there, and we're always looking for volunteers. But I've been here three years, and as Dean Mitchell says, I'm an alumni, so I know the campus well. If you're having any problems in any department or with any of your professors, and you're not sure who to reach out to, just send me an email, call me, and I will try to address your concerns or send you to whomever you need to speak to. And just welcome everybody, the incoming freshmen, and welcome back returning students.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask, I guess Alexis to come in or one of the returning R.A.s for students who entered a CAF and they do not like particularly the way a meal is cooked or what's available. What options are available to them in gourmet dining at that point?
So I can say that typically of students, and like even myself, like I know there are certain things that I don't eat. So I always tell students that you can talk to Mike. Typically, he'll never say no. He'll try to figure out different options. I know right now the den is not open, but typically it opens, I believe, within like that first week or two after the, into the semester. And the den has a little bit more of like the diverse, like fast food options, like mozzarella sticks, chicken tenders, french fries, the specials that all of the students love, especially like that chicken Caesar salad. So if you ever find something that you do not like, go up to Mike, go up to Dave, and they'll figure out some type of options, just to better accommodate you, because they do not like to see any student leave without eating. So don't ever feel that So don't ever feel that you are limited here, just ask. And if you don't feel comfortable and you see one of us in the CAF, whether it's an RD, it's an RA. Just pull them to, to the side. Mike pretty much knows our staff by face, so maybe they can have that conversation on behalf of you.
And any advice in terms of the approach or the way they should communicate those type of grievances?
I would just tell students, and I tell students this all the time. I get sometimes we are frustrated, but it's not what you say, it's how you say it. And that also goes back to how you also communicate and email. I think that people are just a little bit more willing to accommodate those who, you know, approach it from a perspective of concern. And not aggression. So I would just tell students, even if you're frustrated, give yourself just some time to collect your thoughts and then revisit the situation.
Thank you, Alexis. And then I will just say, I'll end with, in terms of, so something about internships and also. Student, work-study employment opportunities. We recently had a change, for those of you who may have been familiar with Michelle. There's another, there's a gentleman, I should say, who's in charge of that. We'll share that information. And maybe if the REH staff can just send out a general email, just saying for work-study inquiries, this is the person. His name is slipping my mind, but.
His name is Marcos Artega.
Okay, is it in the chat?
Yes, I put it down there. And for internships, you would need to reach out to Lisa Sinhiller.
I was gonna also. That you can go to Lisa as well as to connect with work-study jobs. Because all new hires will have to go through a program called Handshake. And so that is something that Lisa offers overseas, which is a great tool to not just find employment opportunities on campus. But also off campus. And so definitely see Lisa either way. You should be able to get to her and then email in Marcos underscore Artega. Will get you information in terms of work-study, in terms of, I think it was specifically what jobs are available. So usually departments have a few different jobs. Obviously, there will be remote work opportunities for certain departments. Because we also want our workers, our student workers to be safe, but yet have the opportunity to earn resources this particular semester. So please, please reach out. The first thing I would say to do is to reach out to the financial services. And, and confirm that you're eligible for work-study first, and then contact the work-study office. Dean Mitchell, Marcus, any final or closing comments? You want me, Dean Mitchell?
Okay, thanks, T. I'm just really excited for the new students because this is, this is not high school now. You're in the big leagues, the major leagues. And this is the time where you will determine who you want to be. And I always say, make sure the person that you're becoming is the person that you can't wait to meet. And so as you write your own story, make sure you color outside of the lines of that story. Step outside of the box of that story. And be creative in your story. Be dominating and excited in your story. Be intelligent when you write your story. And make sure that when you write this story, you're leaving it as a legacy of who you are. And for the returner students on here, you know, this is another year for you to get towards your degree. So you're, you're writing your story to make sure you get to your cap and gown. So that's why I keep honing in on the fact, don't do anything that's going to take that away from you. Like truly think about your decisions and your choices. Think about them before you even do something. Always weigh your options before you do anything. Because that's why I said when something doesn't feel right and it doesn't sound right, it doesn't look right, it's because it's not right. And I want you guys to remember that if you remember nothing else I say. If it doesn't look right, sound right, or feel right, it's wrong. And that will take you away from your story. And it'll just be a book that you started writing and you won't get a chance to finish it at Bloomfield. You might finish it someplace else, but you might not finish it at Bloomfield. So don't let anybody else deter you from what you set out to accomplish. And the one thing, T, that I didn't mention that I really want to plug in before I end my comments. I don't want to deal with any sexual assault case this semester. Cause I'm gonna bring ten hammers. I don't want anyone to violate anyone. No is no is no all day long. You can't come into my office or Zoom with me and think no was spelled M-A-Y-B-E. Or that no was accidentally spelled Y-E-S. No is never a maybe. No is never a yes. Not in my book. And I, I know I'm coming across a little strong, but I want you to hear me when I say it. Be at your best in COVID. Be at your best, as best as you can, and live well. Live well. And use me as a resource. If you don't know about something, you don't know what, how it's gonna play out, email me and say, Dean, I can't give you any names, but this is what's going on. What do you think? And I'm gonna say, I think you should do A, B, and C. Try these options first. So have a great time. CSLE and REH are working. I don't know how many hours, Terrence, you and the REH team have put in. I have no idea. I, the college doesn't have enough money to pay REH and CSLE for all the things that they have done on your behalf. So enjoy these things that they're doing. Have fun. Live it up. Live it up, but live it up safely. That's my piece and I thank you.
So until next time, and we'll have a social justice town hall and other town halls following this one. We're gonna sign off with Savage with Megan Estallion and Beyonce.